It's 6:30. I hereby call this workshop in order. Justin Strickland.
No pledge? I forget.
No pledge for workshop? Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Tonight, it's my pleasure to present the fiscal year 2025 manager's proposed budget. Part of the duties of the manager, one of the biggest duty is to present the proposed budget every year to Council for the next fiscal year. We've spent months on this budget. I want to firstly thank all the departments for showing up to support the budget tonight. We've been through the process with them to get the budget ready. On the staffing side, I want to thank our Assistant Finance Director who's filling in the interim right now while our Finance Director's out on leave. Ms. Kelly Bush, she's going to be talking tonight too, but I just want to go ahead and thank her upfront for the hard work she's put in. Dustin Farin, who's not here tonight, our Accounting Manager, sat in a lot of those meetings. I want to thank him for work he put in. Jasmine Julio for being involved in this process. So just wanted to say some thank yous before we start getting into the detailed budget here.
If I may, before we, as we continue in that vein, I'm so happy to see our PTC 101 people here. Let's give a hand. Thank you for being here. And Stan, it's great to see you.
So going into the budget process, in my mind, what I kind of had and what I told staff, in my mind, my theme for this year, talking about how we were going to form this budget was taking care of what we have. And you'll see that a little bit like later in the presentation, you'll see those words. And I'll kind of define what I mean by taking care of what we have as we move forward. But for me, it really comes down to living in Peachtree City and the expectations we have of how we serve our citizens and what we provide and the facilities we have and the infrastructure we have and the personnel we have. For me, it comes down to how do we keep taking care of what we have at the level that it needs to be taken care of? So that was kind of the theme as we went through this. And Peachtree City is an aging city. I mean, it's, we're celebrating our 65th year this year. And so some of our infrastructure building, stuff like that have needed a little love lately. And so we are very aware of that and very committed to taking care of what we have. So we've seen this over and over, the past two or three meetings, talking about budget and fee schedules. But just to go over it again, the vision we adopted last year is uncompromised excellence. So obviously that also drove decisions we're making for this proposed budget of trying to meet that uncompromised excellence vision for how we do things in the city. And then we have our value, our six values there that also tie back into that vision. And then this past retreat, we adopted the strategic five pillars. The safe, family-friendly community, the active, healthy community, the attractive community, a thriving, resilient business community, and a city organization that is innovative, high-performing, and sustainable. So those five things also, as we move forward, especially in future budget years, I really want decisions that we make to tie into at least one, if not multiple, of these strategic pillars with decision-making that we, that we have as a city. And also tie back into that uncompromised excellence, the overarching vision. So talking about our budget policy, we went over this one last time as well. But basically, the gist of, of all these words are that any new expenses we recommend as a staff or that Council has to consider, we have to offset that with either identified revenue stream or we have to cut expenses somewhere else. Basically, the definition of a balanced budget. Unlike the federal government, at the state level and local levels, we have to actually have a balanced budget and make sure our expenses match our revenues. And that, you know, we're not overspending or anything like that. And then down at the bottom there, we have the four M's that kind of define everything we do, manpower, money, machines, and materials. Everything we do as a city costs one of, if not multiple of these M's. And we'll get into those four M's a little bit later in the presentation as well. So getting into the budget itself, this is the 100,000-foot view of the budget. Like, it's not even 30. It's way up there. These are just the two big numbers of the proposed revenues, the total proposed revenues for the general fund and the total appropriation proposals for the general fund. So you'll see projections for 2024, which is the current fiscal year we're in, are at 55 million, 55.6 million. For this year is what we're projecting in revenues. We're projecting 56.5 in appropriations. So we're expecting to use about 850,000 of our cash reserves by the end of this year for a fund balance of around 55.7%. And what we're proposing for next year's budget is revenues of 56.75 and appropriations of 56.83 for using of cash reserves of about 71,000, which would put our fund balance about 53.3%. So you'll see our difference is we're proposing about 1.13 million more in revenues and appropriations of about 350,000 more. And so drilling down into that a little bit is on the revenue side. You'll see that revenues over projections of this year are about 2.04%. I'm going to change this to the laser. Oh, yeah, it does. That's cool. Sorry, I'm testing stuff out. You'll see that for our organization, 80% of our revenues come from taxes. This is not just ad valorem taxes. That's also our LOST, Local Option Sales Tax, insurance premium taxes, franchise fees, hotel motel tax. So any type of taxes we collect beyond just property taxes goes into that 80% of tax revenue we receive as a city. You'll see that we're projecting, projecting a pretty significant percentage change in intergovernmental revenue. We'll get into this a little later in the presentation, but that is mostly because of a proposed addition to our school resource officers that would increase our, would also increase our revenue from the Board of Education to cover some of the costs for those school resource officers. Another one is, is you'll see investment income. We're being a little more conservative with what we're proposing to bring in on investment income next year, which I'll cover on the next slide. And then the only other one that is dipping down is miscellaneous revenue a little bit. But it brings in, you know, point 1.9% of our budget, so it's, it's really immaterial for what we're projecting for the overall budget. So drilling down into the, really the two big revenue sources we have, the two biggest are ad valorem and our local option sales tax. Ad valorem taxes, we are recommending a millage rate reduction of .06 mils this year. We anticipate the 2024 tax digest, which is for our fiscal year '25, to increase by about 6%. That 6%, 3.5% of it would be reassessments on existing homes or structures or properties. 2.5% of it is new growth, is new buildings that are happening, additions that are happening. So the 2.5 plus the 3.5 is the 6% we're anticipating. And then just to have this information to compare to last year, last year, the tax digest increased by 11%. So it is still growing, but it's slowing down as compared to last year's tax digest value increase. So the total estimated property tax revenue for fiscal year '25 is about 23 million, 22.9, which is a 1.4 million increase over this current fiscal year. Local option sales tax, we're estimating collections to increase by about 3% over this current year, which equals 12.3 million, about 350,000 increase from this current year. And then finally, going back to the interest income, which we are projecting lower for this next year. Interest rates are remaining high right now, but we all know that interest rates can go up and down. They've stayed high for a while now, and with the political climate and everything going on right now, we don't want to necessarily rely that they're going to remain high. But also beyond that, just tangibly, what we know is going to happen, the ARP funds that we've received from the federal government, the interest we've made on those ARP funds is actually unrestricted. We can put that into our general fund, which has been great. But we have to encumber those ARP funds by the end of this year. And we, we estimate that we'll have them spent by fiscal year, by the end of fiscal year '25. So we don't want to rely on that money in the bank making interest beyond this current fiscal year. And also lately, we have spent some cash reserves. We, last meeting, Council approved for us to dip into our reserves by about 4.9 million to purchase the police expansion buildings, or building and land. And so we're just are trying to be a little conservative with our, with our interest estimates here because of some tangible things we know that are happening and then a little bit of uncertainty. So we're, we're estimating 2.6 million of revenue for fiscal year '25 with interest. So going into our 12-year millage, millage rate history, if you look at 2012, our millage rate was 7.178. What we're recommending now for this year would be a millage rate of 5.983. That's a 1.195 mil reduction over the past 12 years. Just to tangibly, to kind of put that into financial terms in today's dollars, just in today's dollars, not compounding how much that has been over the past 12 years. But just in today's dollars, if, if we had a rate of 7.178 now, like we were recommending that for 2024, that would be 4.37, 4.37 million dollars in extra revenue to the city beyond the 5.983. And for the average property owner, which is about a $508,000 house, it's a savings of $243.17. So about 200, if we had this millage rate today, the average property owner would be paying about $250 more dollars on their property than they would be with what we're recommending. So just to kind of put those numbers, like what that millage reduction over the past 12 years is saving an average citizen. So future revenue, one thing this year that we've really kind of thought about, but we don't really have a lot of information on yet, but could impact us within the next 12 months before we meet again about another budget, about next, about fiscal year '26 budget, is House Bill 581. And I felt like it was important enough to at least talk about it in this meeting. And as we get more information, I'm sure we'll talk about it more. But basically, this, this bill was passed by the Georgia General Assembly in their session this year, and it has been signed by the Governor. It does go to a statewide referendum in November, so it has to be approved by all of our states, you know, a majority of our state citizens before it will go into effect. But basically, if it does go into effect in November, well, it will go into effect in January. But if it goes into effect, it would create a new statewide floating homestead exemption, which that exemption would then be tied to the rate of inflation. So basically, what that means is, is with your home reassessments, if you're, like, let's say now this year that your, your evaluation is going up 20%. If the rate of inflation this year is 3.4%, with this new homestead exemption, they could only raise the assessment of your property up to match that CPI. So they would be capped at 3.4%. It wouldn't be able to go up to like a 20% unless inflation was that high. So if that does pass, we will have to staff, and we'll do this with Council, we'll have to evaluate how that would impact us. And because there is an opt-out, if it does pass the state, there is an opt-out provision that governments could opt out of participating in that homestead, but they have to do it by March of 2025, which is before we would do another budget. So, you know, if this does pass, we'll run analysis on it. We'll talk with Council about it. Because there is the whole deal of, you know, opt-in, opt-out, what would either scenario look like for future budgets? There's some other things that the bill does as well, but the biggest one is, is it also creates a new local option sales tax. So right now, with our lost, we have a 1% tax on every penny of, of sales that are made in the city. That goes into our LOST. We have another one for our SPOLOST, which is the special purpose one. The lost is important because it's unrestricted. It goes into our operations. It pays for police salaries. It pays for firefighter salaries. It pays for my salary, everybody's salary. SPOLOST can't do that. So what this one would do is, it would be similar to lost where it would go into the general fund, could be used for property tax relief and be used to operate the city day-to-day. But you can only put a referendum out for that lost if you are participating in the floating homestead exemption. I've read the bill a couple of times. It's really complicated. It has a lot of legal language in it. So there's still a lot of kind of questions to be answered about this, but it's just, it's such a huge thing that's looming out there that if this happens, there's, we're going to have to make decisions about it. If it's approved in November, we're going to have to get together and make decisions about how we want to approach this law if it goes into effect. So just putting that out there, that this is something that even now with this budget, we thought about with how it could impact future revenues, future property tax relief, millage rates. It, it could have impacts across the board with all of that. So.
Justin?
Go ahead.
I remember times when, with John Rory, that he used to have to quote negotiate, whatever that was, with the city, the county manager over.
For the percentages.
For SPOLOST.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that with John Rory being gone and his attitude being gone, that we have a better relationship and we don't have to negotiate that much anymore?
Well, we would have, you would have, just like a SPOLOST or a lost with this new one, whoever's opting in, that's the other question is, is if, if somebody opts in or opts out or how would the split work as far as revenues for the new sales tax? But that would be part of our service delivery strategy that we would go back and negotiate the second lost and how it would be split with whoever's participating in it, within Fayette County. So it would be, it would be a separate negotiation from the current SPOLOST that we're, or current lost that we are in. So it'd be a whole separate IGA.
What is the percentage we get? Do you remember?
I do not.
I don't either.
I don't, I do not.
I don't know that. I'll stop.
I don't either.
But I get it to you.
We negotiated it after the census.
We did it, well, we did it, yes. We do it every 10 years. I do know that. And we did it in 2021.
22.
Did we do it in 22?
Yeah, because I was new mayor. I was two weeks on the job.
I know, I just was going back. We did it since I've been here. We did renegotiate.
I remember when we did it, but I didn't remember what the number was.
Yeah. It was the same. We didn't, I don't think we changed it.
Correct.
It stayed the same.
Correct.
As 10 years ago. But I'll get that number for you.
Thank you.
Hey, Justin, I do have a question. With the complexity of this new floating homestead act and whatever it's called, FLOST, I understand you're going to be doing some training on that and technical training on what it's all about. Tell the citizens about that, because that's kind of important that you get a grasp on all this stuff.
Well, we have, we have the conference, the annual GMA conference in Savannah this weekend. And it's, this is the main reason I'm actually going to the conference, is they're having a session about this specific bill that passed. And so I, I just want to learn more about it because financially for cities and counties, this is the biggest bill that's passed in a long time regarding revenues for local governments. So it's very important to me, and it should be for everybody, to learn how this is going to impact everything.
Hopefully for the positive.
Yes. It's, it's a consumption tax, so it's not going to be like a property-type tax. It's a consumption tax.
Correct.
Okay?
Correct. Yep, it's a sales tax. So you buy stuff, you pay an extra penny if it, if that's the way it all works out.
Okay.
All right. So moving beyond that, I just, that was important enough that we really needed to talk about it a little bit. Basically, everything we just talked about, summarizing that table that we looked at of revenue sources. This is just a visual representation to show, you know, ad valorem taxes and lost. Definitely our two biggest revenue sources at over 60%. Other taxes down here at 12. Charges for services, fines and forfeitures, licenses and permits. I just want to highlight, even though they do, every little bit counts, it's great that we are able to offset a good bit of our expenses on those. But when it comes to these big sources of revenue, you know, those are good to stay on top of. But at the end of the day, our two biggest sources are still those ad valorem and LOST taxes. And then finally, this little, the 7.7 of other revenues, this yellow slice, that takes into account the interest income as well. That's kind of the biggest portion of that 7.7% is that interest income. So I think I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Kelly Bush now to go over expenses.
And before I get started on expenses, Jasmine looked it up, and it's 31.7%.
So out of all the sales tax that's collected by the entire Fayette County, we received 31.7% of that revenue.
Of the lost.
Of the lost.
Of the lost.
And I want to say, I feel like I remember that that was sort of built upon our portion of the digest at the time, too.
Might be. I know SPOLOST is a little different. Like, SPOLOST is a different rate because SPOLOST is based on population.
Okay.
They're, the two are a little different.
So we're going to move into expenses. One of the main things, let's see, you know, everybody here, especially from Peachtree City 101 remembers I am pointer challenged. So, yeah, I mean, it worked. All we can do when doing a budget is, is look at historical information and trends. And then we look at what we think is going to happen going forward. In the last 12 months, we've seen a CPI of 3.4%. So we kind of use that as a basis on projecting revenues and expense increases on, on some things. But we budgeted a 3% COLA in this proposed budget for our employees and a dedicated progression plan tied to performance, which we had a couple of different ways to reward employees in the past. We had a career development. We had a merit. And then we did an evaluation process that wasn't tied to any kind of monetary reward at all. And so we've sort of, Justin and staff worked really, really hard to pull all that together into one bucket and to tie it to the evaluation and tie it to performance. And so we budgeted for that this year. We've seen, just like I know everybody has seen, increases in costs. Construction costs are up about 65%. Technology costs are, we've seen an increase around 26, 27%. I just got back from a conference in Orlando for finance officers. And one of the main topics that they talked about was it's not just government, but industry-wide talent, labor. We, we don't have, we don't have accountants, and I think that's pulled down into all levels. I think we're finally, we always knock on wood, staffed in public safety. But we're, we're having shortages in maintenance techs. And we've had a accounting position, so anybody watching this that's an accountant, we've had an accounting position open since November. And it's just been really hard to get people. Increases in utility costs, vehicles have gone up, I think I even have a number. A 250, F-250 pickup truck has gone up from 30,000 to 45,000, just a basic truck. And that's where we can get them. And we're having to go out there earlier and put in orders for them because it's taken us longer to get them, which you'll see at the end in the model, some of, of the delays in, in getting stuff. We had some changes, some requests for personnel, and those were based on requests that we've had from the Board of Education. We're building a new fire station. We're buying a new building and doing a police annex. We had goals that were provided to us from Council at the retreat that we're trying to accommodate with these positions and then just support for our internal services. And here they are. This budget includes six new school resource officers, three paramedic firefighters. We're, with the new station, it's going to require nine new firefighters. So we have three of those included in this year's proposed budget at half, half the year at 50%. And then you'll see in the model, we've got another, we've got a full three in 2026 budget plus an additional three, and then we have two additional in the 2027 budget. When the fire department came and talked about our ISO rating, one of the things that we, we needed to keep that rating was a community risk reduction coordinator. So currently, that position is being filled by a firefighter. And so if we add this as a dedicated position, then we get back one of those firefighters. So that makes the nine. I know if you were adding, you think, well, that was only eight, but that makes the ninth firefighter. We programmed in an assistant public works director, public works as large as it is, is one of the few departments that doesn't have an assistant. And an urban forestry program manager, we currently spend over a million dollars a year on trees. And this, we have, we have an employee now that went and did all of the certification, and he's a certified arborist, right? So this would be making that a position, a certified position and help to kind of offset some of our, our tree mitigation costs.
Kelly, when you say we spent that money on trees.
Trees.
Is that tree removal? Is that tree trimming? Is that tree?
All, all of the above, trees.
Yeah. Yeah, it's trimming trees and removing trees. And, and as we get to future slides, you'll see we own a lot of land in the city.
I know, I know we do.
Yeah.
But there's trees down everywhere, so.
Yes. So, and this is just, that's, that's taking trees down that are of, most of the calls, Jonathan's not here, DeMarcus, you're here. But, uh, I mean, a lot of the calls we get from citizens are tree-related. I mean, I would say a majority of them are tree-related as opposed to other things, like trees in our land that are going to fall on their land.
Yeah, I know that.
And we, we, we spend, it surprised me when I started here how much we spend on managing trees in our city. And we did, we have bid out. We have bid out tree services since I've been here competitively. So it's not something that we've had this vendor for 20 years and we haven't seen if we can get a better price. We've bid this out in the past three years since I've been here.
I know. I asked you to do a bunch of that stuff on. But I would, I would tell you that if you drive down Robinson Road, there's big branches overhanging Robinson Road.
Yeah. Clint was telling me today.
That's because I took them up there. I pointed out to them.
Well, and one thing with trees that makes Peachtree City a little different than other places is, is some cities or counties you'll see too is, I mean, they'll just clear cut down the road, you know, a lot of, in Peachtree City, we intentionally want to keep our trees. We want them to be close to a lot of things, you know, we want our tree coverage. And so when we decide to trim or to remove a tree, it's, it's a big decision.
Yes.
It's a big decision for us. And even trimming them, we try to trim them as minimally as possible to where you still have the shade effect. And so it's, you know, we're very conscientious.
And as a citizen, I can, I thank you for doing that.
So then we also have a building maintenance, maintenance tech. And that's because we're adding a new building that's going to be our, our largest building currently. It's the library, but soon it'll be the police annex. So that's going to require more upkeep. So there's a, an additional maintenance tech programmed in. A civil engineer for engineering, for Dave, to give him a little more help. An event specialist to help Kathy.
Maria.
Maria. Maria Pocket, who does all of the events that we have on Drake Field, Fourth of July, the Christmas programs. And this will just give her some, some backup, because right now she has to be at all of those. She has to cover and be responsible for all of those. I know, I was in here working when the veterans program was going on in council chambers. And I don't think she had a moment the whole time she was out there just, that's just one of the small little things.
She does a great job with those events.
We're very lucky that we have her in that position.
She's also out there fundraising all the time. She brings in more sponsorship for events than the, anyone the whole time that I've been here. And if she has some help, then that'll give her more time to, to raise money for them. A human resource manager, because we have, we have Dr. Tab now and her vision of bringing our human resource department.
Also, as we, we have.
Best in class, best in class.
We've added a good bit of headcount the past few years to get up to this uncompromised excellence and get up to the level of services that we think we should be at to achieve that vision. And we kept HR, we kept a lot of our support departments the same, while we've added to some of our service departments. And, I mean, HR has felt that strain. HR has felt, you know, that with the advertising of new positions and how many, you know, how many positions, we're, we're over 300 full-time positions now. And I, I think with this budget, we would be over 400 total positions with part-time and seasonal. And we have a department of four in HR. So just adding, you know, one more person to help with that load, especially in risk management. Where, where we lack in HR is risk management, which is, you know, our vehicles and accidents and things, like preventing accidents that we have in the workplace. And we really don't, since I've been here, we haven't had that expertise to really focus on risk management, not just in handling the accidents and claims we have, but in educating and, and doing programming and, and training and making sure our, our employees are not doing stupid things to generate those claims. I think, Dr., would you agree with everything I just said?
Absolutely.
And then that's something that came out of the council retreats. One of the goals that y'all wanted to see was we programmed in an economic development manager. And so the total cost of those positions is $2,466,570. But we're getting reimbursed from the Board of Education for 100% of the school resource officers during the school year, which works out to be about 83% of our fiscal year. So 1 million. So one million, thirty-one thousand. And then we're only programming in the firefighters, like I said, the three firefighters for half a year. So that's an offset of a hundred and seventy-three, a hundred and seventy-four thousand. So our net cost to the general fund for those positions is one million, two sixty-seven, sixty-three.
And just, sorry, Kelly, I'm gonna still, one more time. Uh, just to, I think I've said this to all of you, but just so we're talking about it here. The reimbursement by the BOE is eighty-three percent of the salaries and full, uh, full reimbursement for the vehicles and, uh, uniforms and stuff like that, uh, computers. Um, so that's great, they're covering a lot of the upfront costs. But after this first year, the eighty-three percent would go down to fifty percent with, so that's for, and then fiscal year twenty-six, or fiscal year, yeah, fiscal year twenty-six, when you see it in the model, that's taking that eighty-three percent from this year and, and scaling it back to fifty percent because that's the current deal we have with the BOE for the current SROs we have. Um, and the Board of Education has said they're open to relooking at that, um, percentage, that IGA, um, at some point in the future. So that's something that they've communicated to us as well as Fayetteville. So that, that is something that I think us in Fayetteville will be wanting to go to the table with them about for future years.
Which, which future years? I mean, school year or?
Yeah, I mean, I think ideally, ideally for us as Peachtree City, we would love it if they could cover the eighty-three percent every year. The, the time that they're actually in the schools. Um, I don't know if they would, if they financially would be able to jump from fifty percent to eighty-three percent right away. They're doing it for this one year. But I, I would love some kind of negotiation where we go from maybe like fifty to fifty-five to six, like some kind of five percent scaling up. Um, I mean, but I would love to see that for fiscal year twenty-six. That's, we just have to get to the table with them.
So right now it's just for fiscal year twenty-five?
The eighty-three percent, correct. And it'll go down to fifty for fiscal year twenty-six if we do not renegotiate by then.
And so.
Does anybody wanna guess? Does, you can't guess. Well, Suzanne and Clint, how much does a police officer cost us as a city? Anybody wanna guess?
Hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Oh, you know, I totally agree. Okay. Yeah, surprisingly, a, one police officer costs the city. And this is to, this is not just their salary, they don't make a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. But for us to fund a police position for their salary, their benefits, the, you know, healthcare, vehicles.
Training.
Training, computer, everything, it costs the city a hundred and ninety thousand, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars to bring a new police officer on.
That doesn't include my salary to bring him in.
Correct.
Swearing him in.
We have to swear him in. Um, but, and then firefighter is around, what was it? Firefighter's around a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So firefighter's a little less because they don't have a vehicle for each firefighter. I think that's where the big difference is there is the vehicles. But firefighter costs about one twenty-seven to bring in. And then even just a new maintenance tech for public works or recreation, uh, costs around eighty-three thousand with benefits and everything to bring in. So, I mean, and that goes back to our, our first workshop or our workshop two weeks ago where we talked about that steep trend that we saw since COVID of how much, uh, personnel costs, how much national earnings have just trended up, not just us, but just nationwide. How much it costs to bring, to have people working for you anymore, because the market's so competitive. So, anyway, sorry, Kelly.
No, that's fine. Um, at the last workshop, I think Jasmine showed y'all this, was it the same slide? It may have, or very similar to an average property in Peachtree City, five hundred and nine thousand dollars. And the breakdown of what you pay in property tax. That one was at our current, um, six point oh four three mills with the point oh six reduction. It goes from one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars to one thousand, two hundred and seventeen fifty. So it's roughly twelve, thirteen dollars a year savings to a taxpayer. But one of the things that I, I'd like to point out is that police and fire together total up to, um, like twenty-six six, twenty-six point six million dollars. And the avalorum tax, when Justin was going over the revenues, is only about twenty-three million dollars. So avalorum tax doesn't even cover our public safety cost. Um, we have to pull in the other revenues that he showed. And then this is just a good visual of police, fire, public works, recreation. Our big four make up seventy percent of our cost. And those are the, the, the service, the service portions of the city. There's planning, there's planning department, but the majority in the library. But the rest of these are mostly support for those big, those big four. And then to look at it a different way by account category, salaries and other personnel costs make up about sixty-five percent of our total expenditures. And since we are a service industry, that makes sense. Why are you looking at it that way?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Sorry, I get focused.
This is just showing basically that we have a balanced budget. This is comparing our revenues and our, our sources of funds to our expenditures or our uses of funds and showing that we're current, to have a balanced budget, we're using seventy thousand dollars of our reserves or our fund balance this year. Thank you.
You're good. Yeah, so that slide.
You want me to go back?
Yeah, that, this slide basically covers basically everything we just went through. Um, you know, as far as the minute detail, I'll be, I'm gonna be happy to go through that with, you know, any of you that request it. But, um, this is basically like a balance sheet, you know, hypothetical balance sheet of the budget that just shows, these are our revenue sources, there's the use of, of reserves there. These are where our expenses are going, going broken down as we've explained. And then you see the zero here, which is basically, uh, sources over appropriations, which is gonna, which we're presenting a balanced budget. So moving on to the stormwater fund, we're gonna talk about some of our other funds here. And, uh, we're gonna start off with some of our enterprise funds. Our stormwater utility fund, we're not recommending any significant operating changes, uh, mostly because we're in the process of performing a cost of service and rate study. That has not been done in over a decade, uh, with the stormwater fund. And you'll see that, you know, as we go to the next slide, you'll see that we're starting to have to use reserves to support operations of stormwater. So it's something we definitely need to look at as far as the rates that we're charging and the cost of what it costs to actually keep our stormwater infrastructure up. One of the future slides I have on here shows that we have close to a hundred miles of pipes in our city, just stormwater pipes. Not water pipes, not sewer pipes, just stormwater drainage pipes. We have almost a hundred miles of pipes in the city and the city is sixty-five years old. And some of our neighborhoods, most of our neighborhoods were built in the eighties and nineties. And so we're starting to see some age on our pipe infrastructure. And so we've, we've been having to, uh, replace those as we go. And especially in our older neighborhoods that are older than the eighties and nineties, uh, we've had to focus on those a good bit lately too. So we are still including six hundred thousand dollars for renewal and extension, which that is the pipelining replacement. It's basically the CIP, it's basically the capital, uh, for the stormwater fund. Uh, replacing a vehicle, so the total budget comes out to about two point seven five million. This is the breakdown of that. You see here that the charges for services makes up ninety-nine percent of the revenue. And we have a little bit of investment come there, investment income there. Um, and then you see our big three costs for this system, or four costs really, are the personnel and then the services. And then that R and E, that renewal and extension. And then the debt service on, uh, the bond we pulled, twenty thirteen, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, the bond.
Twenty thirteen and then we.
We refinanced it last year, refunded it last year. So, um, and that, the refunding we did is actually saving us money, uh, in that, in the debt service payments. But you see even with all this, we're having to start to dip into reserves at about thirty-eight thousand, forty thousand this year, uh, to fund the operations there. So that's why we're ahead of the curve here, trying to get this, uh, rate and, uh, cost study done so we can get this back to looking more healthy and do some major projects like lake dredging, uh, that we need to get done, um, that we know we need to get done.
How large was the bond?
Uh-oh. Ten years ago.
Don't ask me those questions. Um.
It's all gone, we spent it all.
I think originally it was like, it wasn't, it was like three point five million and then they refinanced it. I think originally it was twenty, two thousand and seven maybe, and they refinanced it the first time in twenty thirteen and added an additional nine million dollars. Does that sound right to me or are you familiar?
I don't remember that number. I remember refinancing it because there was a period of time after the, uh, crash, after the, you know, great recession, when we went through every single debt instrument and either paid it off or refinanced. And the only one we couldn't do was the one West Fifty-four where we had borrowed money to buy attractive land. But what that amount was, I do not recall.
I think I know. Do what? Eight million, um.
Well, we'll move on, you can read the number when you find it. So moving on to the amphitheater fund, another one of our enterprise funds. We're so, I'm very pleased with this, you got it?
I got it. And I was, I was right that the original was three point five million. And then, um, they did another seven, they, they reissued seven point eight million. So.
Okay, so about eleven million.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Or that's where you're getting your eight.
So the amphitheater fund, having been in special events myself for part of my career when I first started out in government, being, running an enterprise fund, it's very rare to see an, uh, event venue that actually supports itself. Like they're enterprise funds, but they usually need subsidies unless they're just really, running really well, which ours is. It's fantastic. Um, so just recently improvements we've done, we've expanded the picnic table area, we've reconstructed the lawn seating, we redesigned the floor seating, we've added the VIP seating up in the breezeway. This past year, we did new upgraded LED lights, which are fantastic. I've been out to see them, um, and new trusses to hold them. So we're very proud of this fund because it continues to be self-sustaining and it continues to make enough to reinvest in itself. Like the money that it's making over what we budget, we're putting back in in these projects that are listed up here. Um, so not only is it self-sustaining, it's self-sustaining for operations and it's self-sustaining for its own capital projects, which has been great. Um, so just to show support for the Fred, they sold eight shows out last year, they've already sold five shows out this year. So we're just very happy with what they've done. Um, this is the actual breakdown of the budget we're proposing for them for next year. Um, you see our sponsorships have gone up, it was about two seventy-five. And this year's budget, we're going up to over three hundred thousand this year. They've done such a good job getting sponsorships, uh, for the venue. Um, so we're just very proud of the amphitheater and what the, what the Fred, you know, how we've been able to operate the Fred over the past, uh, four or five years since COVID. Cause it shut down during COVID and we didn't, you know, you didn't know what was gonna happen with all that. But since COVID, people have come back in force to go to concerts and the Fred, I mean, you could testify to this, Mayor Frank, the Fred looks probably the best it's ever looked.
It's gorgeous, it's wonderful.
It's a, it's a gem of the city, yeah.
Yeah.
Like it's a fantastic venue. And if you have not been to a concert out there, you need to go.
Yeah, absolutely.
It is, uh, it's, you know, you're sitting out in the middle of the woods and it's just such a cool atmosphere. So, moving on to hotel motel tax, one of my favorite funds because it's so complicated with the percentages and how you gotta split them up. Uh, we are estimating, uh, for fiscal year twenty-five, for revenues to go from about two million to about two point one million. So a growth of about a hundred thousand. Uh, we tax eight percent for hotel motel tax, which is the most you can tax in the state of Georgia. When you tax it eight percent, you have to break it up in a certain formula. So this is that formula. So of the eight percent, three point five of that eight percent goes to our CVB, our Commission and Visitors Bureau. You see, we're estimating for them to go up from, well, their current budget's eight sixty-five, we're estimating they're gonna bring in nine oh four, about nine twenty-two. So they're getting close to a million for their budget, uh, as we move forward into the next year. Uh, three percent of that eight percent goes to the general fund, which is unrestricted. Uh, that's getting close to eight hundred thousand, we're projecting for next year. And then finally, the one point five percent goes into our tourism product development fund or TPD, uh, budgeting about three hundred and twenty thousand for that. We do take seventy-five thousand right off the top of that and, and, uh, fuse it into the amphitheater fund because tourism product development basically has to be spent on our facilities or programs that promote tourism, that put heads in beds. So our amphitheater, our tennis, our tennis center, uh, our, the PAC, the Athletic Complex, uh, Mead, Mead Fields and, um, our BMX track are our five places that we specifically put TPD funds into. Um, so that's our proposed TPD for this year, or not TPD, our proposed hotel motel tax. And I'm gonna pass it over to Jasmine to cover capital outlay.
Yeah, so earlier in the presentation, Justin went over the four Ms. Uh, manpower, money, materials and machines. So the capital improvement program fund, um, and the major capital outlays are the material portion of the four Ms. So here are just a couple of, um, programs that we have coming up, uh, for this fiscal year twenty-five. We have citywide facility improvements, uh, public works and recreation equipment, ten patrol vehicles, uh, vehicle replacements, technology replacements and software, street resurfacing. And we have it listed here as non-splosted. And the reason why is because we do also do, uh, funding for street resurfacing under Lamig, which is a local maintenance improvement, um, grant. We also have vehicles that are not related to, uh, police. So that would be code enforcement vehicles, we have, uh, fire department vehicles and just other vehicles. Um, and then someone told me to put Laura's splash pad here, I don't know if that's okay, but.
That's true.
Yes, we have a splash pad.
I see no problem with this.
It actually was one of the items that were discussed, that was discussed during the retreat, so it's one of the retreat goals. But some of the other items that fall within these categories, we're repainting the gathering place, which is where our senior center is. Um, and the police department, we have a gate and fence repair that I know the police department will be very excited about. Residents in general may be, uh, excited to hear that we're gonna be adding some shade structure at the Glenlock Pool. And then, uh, Justin touched at, on the BMX bike track earlier when he was talking about the TPD funds, but we're also remodeling the bat, the restrooms there. So there's other, um, projects within this, but I kinda wanted to go over that. And, um, this amount is gonna be about four point two million dollars estimated. And we're gonna take a look at some of the other special purpose capital funds. So we're talking about splosh, we're talking about impact fees. And then we're also talking about the American Rescue Plan Act. So you probably heard ARPA throughout the presentation and that's what we're talking about. So looking into splosh, currently Peachtree City has two, um, sets of splosh project, or two sets of splosh that we have. We have the twenty seventeen splosh, which were about thirty-nine projects. Out of the thirty-nine, we have sixteen that are considered to be open, uh, but seven of those are really projects that are open. When I say sixteen, it's because we have, uh, six projects that are ongoing maintenance. So we're talking about, uh, repairs to the bridges and tunnels that are projects listed. We have path repairs, street paving, so those are ongoing, oh, and, uh, I said bridges, yeah. So those are ongoing maintenance, um, items that are gonna continue to, uh, keep going until the money's run out. But there are, uh, seven projects within the, uh, twenty seventeen we consider to still be open. So then, uh, in twenty twenty-three, thirty-eight, uh, projects were approved by referendum, by the voters. And while these are mandated, uh, projects, there's, there's no specific timeline like some of the other special purpose, uh, funds. But with this is, if you think about it, every six years or so, we're gonna have voting for splosh. And if we don't complete these projects and another splosh referendum comes back out, residents aren't gonna vote for it because they're gonna feel like, well, you all had an opportunity to do twenty seventeen, twenty twenty-three, but we haven't seen any of, any of those projects. So that's why we wanna make sure that we're completing these projects within a designated time to show the residents that we're really putting forth their pennies and, uh, getting their tax dollars at use. So, um, I just wanted to also talk a little bit about, about it here. You see it listed, cannot be used for maintenance or repair items. And that's exceptions is paving. So we're talking about street and path paving. I've heard people say, well, you identified ten million dollars worth of maintenance that's required in the city. And why didn't you include that in splosh? Because by law, we could not. You cannot use splosh for maintenance. So that ten million dollar maintenance, uh, that was identified could not be utilized for a splosh. So I just wanted to make sure that I highlighted that point and went over that. Um, going back to some of the, the twenty seventeen projects, I'm sorry, the twenty twenty-three projects that are gonna be a priority for fiscal year twenty-five, we're looking at Huddleston Road. We hear a lot of our residents, uh, talk about Huddleston Road and not having paths on that. So that's gonna be one of, uh, the projects, but it's gonna include some other, um, upgrades. Pickleball courts, I, I don't know if anybody's excited about that, but we get calls constantly about pickleball courts. And we know that is one of the twenty twenty-three splosh projects that are gonna be a priority. But I do wanna say that, uh, we are waiting to receive our recreation master plan, um, uh, presentation from the company that we hired. We wanna make sure we make the right decisions when it comes to our recreation. And having that master plan is gonna be important, so we are waiting for that. Uh, but it is definitely still gonna be a priority in fiscal year twenty-five. And then going to look at the twenty seventeen projects that are, are. And then going to look at the twenty seventeen projects that are, are gonna be a priority. Coming up in this fiscal year, we're talking about the path on North Peachtree Parkway from Walt Banks, uh North Peachtree Parkway, North Hill, Pascal Road. Right here by ACP, a pedestrian bridge to cross over to Drake Field. Crosstown Roundabout has recently come up uh in front of council. That's one of the projects as well. And then ongoing, I talked a little bit about it earlier, just ongoing paving. That's both in the twenty seventeen sploß and twenty twenty-three sploß. So we're talking about paving streets, paths, and then as well as parking lots at our facilities.
Jasmine, when is the recreation master plan due?
So we anticipate seeing that sometime in August. Um, but we have already met with them and, and taken a look. They've asked us for a couple of punch items to provide to them, just to make sure that what the information they have is accurate, so that'll be coming back in front of council soon.
Thank you.
Did you say August?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we anticipate them to present it to you all in August.
All right, so um Justin talked a little bit about the uh encumbrance of the ARPA projects, the funds. And so the monies actually have to be encumbered. These, this is one of the funds that actually does have a timeframe based on the law. It's not anything that we're just creating. And it has to be encumbered by December of this year, December thirty-first. And then it has to be spent by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. So these are projects that um have priority because we do not wanna send any of that money back. So just to go over a little bit, I'll, I'll let you all know that the checklist here, the, the checks that you see next to the projects, like the tennis center, the city hall renovations, Flat Creek Boardwalk tree removal and repairs, and then city hall, uh Station eighty-one and eighty-two's exterior sealants. Uh, those have all been completed. Except for the tennis center, there's still a couple of remaining items, but those have all been completed. Regarding the other projects that do not have check marks, they're either out to bid, have been awarded, or are going to be awarded. Now, we do plan to award, um, excuse me, not plan to be awarded, plan to be put out for bid, excuse me. Um, regarding the city hall projects, there's several of them there. We do plan to group that together and put it all out for one bid. But we do plan to meet all of the deadlines uh to ensure that we do not send any of the money back. So by encumbering the funds by December of this year. So you'll be seeing a lot of those come back in front of council. And then the impact fee, this is another one that has time limits um on encumbering and spending the funds. So for impact fees, uh they have six years from the time that you actually receive the money. Impact fees are uh redevelopment fees that are charged when there's a redevelopment in the city. And there are laws on how we can spend it at the upcoming meeting on Thursday uh at nine thirty. Council's gonna be approving the uh resolution for the capital improvement element. That is where we sort of do a, a, not a budget, but a um an audit of where we have utilized the impact fees. So just to kind of make sure there's a next uh understanding as well, when it comes to impact fees, we can only utilize these funds on new or expansion. So for example, under culture and recreation, those are exclusively for paths, but it's not the maintenance of paths. These funds, uh this three point nine million can only be used on new or expansion of paths. So new paths or an expansion of the path system. Uh, the fire department, same thing, that six hundred uh thousand dollars can be utilized for Station eighty-five, that's a new station. And then we have here the four hundred and nine thousand, that's actually been utilized, council approved, I believe in the last meeting, for that, the, the entire four hundred thousand to be used for the purchase of the police, uh new police expansion building as well as the property. So those are um the impact fees that can be utilized uh and how they could be used.
So this is the financial model. It's a five-year model. We start with last fiscal year's adopted budget. This one. Where we had budgeted to use five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars of reserves. But in actuality, at the end of the year, we put five point three million dollars back into fund reserve, reserve, fund balance. Part of that, one of the things that I like to explain is that when I talked about not being able to get vehicles, not being able to get supply, there were still supply chain issues going on. And so at the end of the year, we weren't completely um what's that word in English?
We didn't, we didn't spend all our money.
We didn't spend all our money. We didn't complete everything. We didn't get everything that we ordered. And um so we had to carry that money forward into the fiscal year twenty-four budget. And I think that was around two million dollars. So two million dollars of that five, five point three was actually for projects that were still ongoing from fiscal year twenty-three. So then we get to our adopted budget for this year. We thought we would spend about a hundred and three thousand dollars, but as the year is, we're halfway through, it's looking more like we're gonna spend eight hundred and fifty-one, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Then we come to this year that we're proposing the budget for y'all, fiscal year twenty-five, next year. Um, we are down to seventy thousand dollars of use of fund balance and Justin and Jasmine and the department heads, division directors and I, we started out, when we put it out to, to the departments to put in what they felt like they needed, we were set to use two point nine million dollars of fund balance. But we sat down, we met with each department head, each division, and we went over it and things like, oh, well, maybe we could do that this year out of, out of this fund, or maybe we can wait a few years on this, or do we really need this? And we whittled it down to seventy thousand dollars. And that, using that seventy thousand dollars still includes adding those seventeen positions to the budget. And we are at fifty-three percent of reserves, uncommitted funds. And how you get that is by dividing your fund balance into your expenditures for the next year. So that tells you, we've got fifty-three percent of our expenditures reserved for. It helps with our bond rating, it helps with um, it helps with, you saw the interest that we're getting on that money, so money makes money. Then we have programmed in fiscal year, because it is, we, we look out, we look out forward. And so I talked about the firefighters, so in fiscal year twenty-six, I'm using the wrong thing. In fiscal year twenty-six, the use of fund balance goes up to nine hundred thousand dollars. We have the full three firefighters in there, plus an additional three firefighters. Um, plus the school resource officers are only gonna be reimbursed at fifty percent instead of eighty-three percent. And there are some other things that are, that are programmed in, because even though we have a capital improvement fund, that fund is financed through the general fund, through an operating transfer to the general fund. So any capital projects that we have going out into future years, or any debt that we're looking at, the, is also an operating transfer from the general fund. So you see it going up in twenty-seven, we have programmed in a seven and a half million dollar facilities bond, which is based on needs or things that the departments put forward that they might need this year, but we figured we could maybe wait a few years on them and maybe the best way to do it is through financing. I can tell you Paul Savator always believes in generational equity and financing things out so that the people that are getting the use of the facilities or the projects are the ones that are paying for it. Um, so that seven point five million dollar facilities bond, the debt starts on that in this year. So you see the use of fund balance going up and um our percentage going from forty-one percent to thirty-eight percent. And then in twenty-nine, it goes down to thirty-seven percent, but you can see the use of fund balance is actually less. And we pull this out for five more years. We actually have it out in future years and we actually start putting money back in to fund balance. So Justin and I and, well, everybody has worked really, really hard on this and we feel like it's a good, stable model.
Yes. Well, one of my key things with this was, is even though we're showing using fund balance all five of these years, you see that it starts to trend back in twenty twenty-nine, it starts to trend less. And as we projected it out to twenty thirty-four further, what we're not showing here is that as we're using that fund balance in the future years, it starts to do this. It starts to kinda come back and balance itself, which is what I needed to see to be able to recommend this budget, because if I didn't see that, then we would have to make some more choices. Because I cannot come to council or our citizens and recommend a model that does this, you know, that just tanks into the ground. Um, because I have, the county I was in before I came here, that's exactly what I walked into, was they had made some decisions with their budget over the previous ten years that had left it to, if they continued, they were gonna be out of money in two years. So I have, I have come into a situation like that and I would never wanna put Peachtree City or our citizens in that situation. So I have to see some kind of stabilization to be able to, to recommend uh this budget and this model uh to you all as we move forward. And this model is, it's a conservative model. Like I've, I think I've talked to you all about it where this model, it, it does have that facilities bond plugged in there at seven point five million and we may decide that twenty-seven's not the time to do it. So there's just some assumptions there of projections. Projections are projections. Nobody has a crystal ball about what the financial climate is actually gonna look like in twenty-seven. And we do make some tangible assumptions, which are those firefighters. We know we have to bring those firefighters on, so that's in there. But then other things like grants that we may get, like the SAFER grant we've applied for, uh congressional discretionary spending that we've applied for, which, I'll go ahead and announce this today, uh we, we have applied for congressional discretionary spending in the amount of about two point two five million dollars to help us with this police annex we're buying. We also wanna turn part of it into emergency operations center because we do not have one in the city. So we applied with Senator Warnock's office and Senator, Senator Ossoff's office uh for that funding, um for a seventy-five twenty-five match. And we, Senator Ossoff called us today and Senator Warnock called us a few weeks ago and we are on both their lists to recommend uh to the full Congress uh for that funding. Still doesn't mean we'll get it, so that's why that money is not in this model, because we may or may not still get it, but I'm very excited that we have the support of both our senators pushing that forward uh to fight for us to succeed to fund that project. So um when we do the model, we have to, basically, we do some assumptions, but we also have to go off that some things that may work out and we may get to help us, we have to assume that we're not going to, because they're not guaranteed.
What, what project are you trying for?
Uh, emergency operations center, EOC. So it would be, it would be part of, we would, part of the square footage of the new police building would be dedicated to, because it has a commercial kitchen in it. It would be dedicated to emergency operations when we have disasters for our staff to operate out of. So we're excited about the possibility of, of, of getting those funds, but they're not guaranteed. So that's, we have to be conservative when we do these models, because they, if we, if we budget that they'll happen and then they don't, then that's the worst case scenario, so we don't wanna assume anything. So moving forward, are you good, Kelly? Okay. So circling back to taking care of what we have, um as my framework of, of going through this budget process, I just wanted to kinda put into perspective some of the things we actually do have in the city that we, that we take care of and have to sustain. And this is just some of the things. This is just some of the things that popped into my head as I was making this presentation. But when I say taking care of what we have, I don't just mean our infrastructure, even though I'm listing a lot of that here. I also mean our citizens. We have forty thousand citizens in the city. We have over fourteen thousand households in the city. As a city, we provide services to every single one of those people in our city and people who come into our city that don't live here. So I mean, if you're in an accident, that's us that respond to it. If uh you have something going on at your house, a medical emergency, we respond to it. Our officers patrol the streets and investigate crimes. We pave the roads, we pave the paths. We have over eighty-seven buildings in our city that help with the services and operations that we do, over four hundred thousand square feet that we have to maintain. We have over a thousand vehicles and pieces of equipment that we maintain for those services, over almost five thousand traffic signs in our city that we maintain ourselves. Over two hundred miles of streets, hundred miles of paths. We have close to a hundred miles of pipe, like I talked about earlier with stormwater. We have over eight thousand drainage structures in our city that we maintain. Over one hundred detention ponds that we maintain, that we own as a city. Twenty-nine tunnels, forty-eight bridges. This number surprised me because I actually did not know this number. Um, I knew a lot of the other ones, but over forty parks, fields and recreation areas. That, for a city our size of twenty-four square miles, that is a lot of recreation. So we, I mean, and we maintain all of that and I think we do it to a very high standard. We have a lot of recreation, other recreation uh departments in other cities that want to be here, that, that wanna come here and work for us because we do so well with our recreation and our maintenance of it. We own two thousand six hundred and fifty acres in the city and that doesn't count our roads. It doesn't count the rightaways. It's just property that we own, green belts and stuff like that. That equates to eighteen percent, eighteen percent of the square mileage in our city is owned by us. So the ci, the city organization owns eighteen percent of the land in the city. We also maintain beyond that two thousand six hundred and fifty acres, three hundred and ninety-eight acres of rightaway. So that includes all of the roads that we mow and maintain, uh over eighty landscape islands that are in those roads. And then the big, one of the big ones for me is that last one, two hundred and eighty neighborhood entrances. This is the fourth government I've worked for in my ten years and I have never worked anywhere or seen anywhere besides us that maintain entrances to neighborhoods. And the, not only the entrances in the landscape of the entrances to the neighborhoods, but the signs themselves, like the monument signs that go, you go into your, into the neighborhoods that say what the name of the neighborhood is. Two hundred and eighty of them we maintain, which is something that our citizens want. It's something that the citizens have wanted, so we have continued to do that. Finally, um this is our last slide here. As I was kind of putting this presentation together, I wanted some kind of slide to talk about uncompromised excellence and I think we've done a good job. I mean, you see the pictures there. We got our PTC one oh folk, one oh one folks here. That's your graduation picture. I didn't know y'all were coming tonight, so I, but I had your picture up here anyway. There's good things we've done over the past few years. I mean, just since I've been here, there's so many good things we've done in the city to stay on that path of uncompromised excellence and, and go towards that vision and, and all that. But there's things moving forward with this budget and future budgets and how we operate as a city that we need to continue to do to keep that vision alive and keep us moving in the right direction. So these are just some of those points and I'll read them because I, I wanna say them. I mean, keeping our, the biggest one that popped in my mind was keeping our employee pay at the eighty-fifth percentile is so huge. Like it, we had so many problems before we did that pay plan of, I mean, we had, we were at the point that I think we were almost close to twenty percent of our police department was vacant. I mean, so I mean, they were just struggling. They couldn't fill shifts. Same thing with our fire department. I mean, we were bleeding public safety positions and we could not hire them. And that pay plan has completely reversed that. And we need to make sure we stay, not only it's good that we did that, but in the coming years, as we need to fund pay plans to make sure we're staying at that eighty-fifth percentile and staying above the trend of other places, we need to be the des, we need to be the city that people wanna come work for. We don't need to be the fiftieth percentile of, okay, you're in the middle, I might come there. No, our pay needs to be at the point where we get the best of the best and I will fight for that tooth and nail all day long. Because it directly impacts the citizens sitting here and that aren't here. It, it impacts the level of services they get every day. So for me, that was like the obvious number one. But we need to encourage smart economic development. And when I say smart, like council has, like you all, I think have, have had in your minds, we don't need to just take everybody who wants to come to Peachtree City. It's gotta be smart. The growth and the development here have to be smart. It has to be planned, just like we have done for sixty-five years. Uh, it has to be, it has to fit into Peachtree City. We need to invest in our safety and when I say safety, I don't just mean police and fire. I'm only, I, I mean, I do, I, I do mean them, but I also mean making sure we have safe roads, making sure we are funding our paving programs and our maintenance programs for our buildings and our playgrounds and everything, you know. If we're doing the services, we need to make sure that they're as safe as possible. Um, we need to keep investing in maintenance. We don't need stuff in the city to get decrepit or fall out of uh, you know, a good, a good surface level. It needs to be maintained to the uncompromised excellence standards. We don't need to sacrifice our services. For me, the biggest way that we kill Peachtree City as a city, our identity, is to cut our services. If you start cutting services that we offer in Peachtree City that other places don't offer, or things that we do above and beyond that uncompromised excellence level, that's how Peachtree City goes from uncompromised excellence to meh. Like you said, so I just, I don't think that our citizens or any of us want our. So I just, I don't think that our citizens or any of us want our city to be just a city. We want it to be Peachtree City. And we wanna be recognized for that. So our service levels are fantastic, and we need to keep it that way. We need more citizen engagement. I love that we're creating the Transportation Advisory Group. I think we're gonna re, in the future coming months, we're gonna reestablish the Recreation Advisory Group. And there's more groups that we need to think about as well. So I think that's good. And we need to keep engaging our citizens and keeping people active in what we're doing as a city and hear their opinions. It's great to hear other opinions besides us in this room. We need to tie our budget process to our five strategic pillars. I brought that up at the beginning of the presentation, I brought it up in the last one. I think as, as, and this is more for us as staff, but as, as we as staff start thinking about what we're doing with our budget and how we're trying to achieve our goals, it needs to tie back. We need to officially, you know, start tying things into those five strategic pillars about what we're doing. We need to continue great programs like PTC one oh-one and our internship program that we're doing now. I think those have been fantastic since we've reestablished those, which kind of ties back into citizen engagement. But I wanna call out, I mean, PTC one oh-one was great, because a lot of people that participated in it, I did not know before that program. And so we've met some citizens that we've never met before. And I think we've educated them to how we operate as well. And then the interns, I think, are so important, because it's the next generation. It's the, it's, when, when I was a kid, and I think also any kids, it's not, you don't sit there and think like, I'm gonna work in local government one day. Like, it's not something you dream about. So exposing younger people to how we operate, even just during an eight-week or twelve-week summer program, I think is fantastic to show younger people how we operate and things we do. When the Recreation Master Plan is submitted in August, it's gonna be very crucial that council and staff and citizens that we buy into that plan. Because that plan is useless unless we actually commit that we're actually gonna do some things that are on that plan. So as that plan comes out and we roll out and we talk about it, you know, we're gonna have to commit to doing some things that are in that plan. I think it's important as we move forward that ordinances and policies get updated. Not just to do them, but to really just bring them in to make more sense. We have ordinances that conflict with each other, things like that. So a lot of that needs to be updated and cleaned up. And then finally, three things that we, or two things, I'll talk about these next two things. Two things that we didn't highlight in this presentation so far, but are included in this budget. One of them is a boundary growth study. So we are funding in the budget a boundary study, because I know council has talked about annexation. We haven't updated it since twenty-fourteen. How are we gonna grow in the coming years? So we are funding that, which also will tie into our impact fees. We're gonna include recalculating the formula for our impact fees in that as well. And we also wanna look at nine-one-one feasibility study. And when I say that, we wanna look at what it would look like for us to actually operate our own nine-one-one center instead of the county operating it for us. And it comes back to that uncompromised excellence of, could we do it better than what we're currently getting from the county? So we wanna just take a look at it. We wanna fund a study to look and see what it would take for us to be able to do that ourselves. And then finally, one of the goals for council, and I, I agree with it, that we need to keep on top of Highway fifty-four, not just fifty-four, seventy-four, but that whole corridor. Because over the next decades or so, we need to make sure that we plan smartly on how to manage traffic down that corridor, because it does get so congested. And we have to plan smartly to make sure that it doesn't get too, too bad. So it's very important that we keep looking at Highway fifty-four and keep planning for things to make that traffic better through that whole corridor. So those are really the things that were in my mind, kind of at the end of this process of, okay, we've presented this budget now, what are other things that we really need to think about for the future to keep our uncompromised excellence vision going into the future years beyond what we're talking about now? So that's, that's our presentation for tonight. This is our budget calendar coming up. We're currently on Tuesday, June eighteenth. But the next budget meeting, or the next budget milestone we have is on July eleventh. We will hold a public hearing for the proposed budget in the CIP, which will be at a regular, our July eleventh is our only council meeting in July. And then the first meeting in August will be when we plan to adopt the operating budget in CIP and the millage rate. And we'll have the final digest by then, hopefully, to adopt the millage rate. And if, you know, depending on what the final millage rate ends up being, if it's a five point nine eight three, then we'll also have to hold some public hearings for that millage rate as well. So I will turn it over to, back to you, Mayor, for any questions or comments from council.
All right, council. Frank, you wanna start?
I just wanna compliment you. This is a great opportunity, both Kelly and the staff and yourself just. I know we've been in a lot of meetings, not anywhere near as many as you guys have been. But I thought you did a great job. Really did. Thank you.
Suzanne?
Well, I guess I'll just, I don't know. You did that on purpose, Frank?
There it is.
He does that all the time. It's no secret, I wanna roll back the millage rate. I wanna go on record as saying that there are a lot of people here in Peachtree City who are suffering and struggling with the inflation rate that we've suffered through for the last four years. Maybe there's more that we can do with the budget. I don't know whether that's cutting some individual departments, taking five percent off of each one. I don't know. Unfortunately, with the process that we're going through, I only picked up the copy of the budget over the weekend and have not had much time. In case you didn't notice, there's an election in progress today, and I'm heavily involved. So I haven't had a chance to pick through everything. But I think we have an awful lot of people here in Peachtree City who are doing a lot worse off than a lot of people here think. I do a lot of door knocking, and I see a lot. I see a lot when I walk up the sidewalk, I step up the steps, I knock on the door, I talk to the people. I see the house, I see the yard, I see the people, I see the maintenance that's not getting done. And there are people in this city who are hurting. And, and I realize that unfortunately, it's kind of like tilting at the windmill. Because the biggest part of our tax revenue or our tax bill is because of the Board of Education. And so trying to control how much people pay in taxes by trying to control Peachtree City's taxes is the small part of a very large pie. And unfortunately, the Board of Education did not do the right thing and roll back their millage rate. So regardless of what we do, we're gonna still see a lot of people who continue to struggle. And that bothers me.
Laura?
My thoughts are, first of all, this was a great presentation. So thank you, Kelly and Jasmine and Justin. Thank you for, to all of our department heads for being here. I know each of you have sat down and spent a lot of time on this budget. I'm grateful that we are doing a little bit of a rollback on our millage, that we can show our citizens that we are trying to be mindful of their needs and that we were able, I'm happy that we were able to bring this down below six percent. So I'm, I'm grateful for that. Thank you for all of your work and your commitment to our city. I know each of you truly cares. When I sit with each of you, I can tell how much you care and love this city. And I appreciate each of you for that. And those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
I guess this is on. A lot of hard work went into this. I happen to be one of those individuals that really like budgets. I know that makes me weird, but I still like budgets.
I'm right there with you. I'm weird out there.
I like budgets. I've done budgets my whole business career, and I dig into the weeds. And I like to get into the weeds. I'm not yet done. And we've got, we've got more work to do in my mind before we can come to a final budget. But at the same time, I know that the people in this, in this city have put a lot of work in doing this budget together. I know how hard it was when I was running companies. It's equally as hard, because now you've got a lot more, a lot more people working on this with you, Justin. So I appreciate all the hard work that everybody's put in. But I guess it's now time for us to really slice and dice it, make sure we're comfortable with all the numbers, make sure that we take a look, as, as Councilman Brown says, take a look at the millage rate and come out with the things that we want. Number one, we wanna make sure that we do the services. That's why people live in this city. They love our services. We do just about everything for them. So we don't wanna really cut on that. But maybe there's some areas that we can postpone, possibly. And I'd like to take a look at those over the next week or so. But other than that, I, I, I will honestly say, the budget looks good on what my first review of is. But at the same time, I'm sure there's some things that I'll uncover and have some discussions with your staff and you, and we'll move from there.
Be happy to do it.
And then final thoughts. I, I remember many years ago, we had a city manager who used to bring in department heads to kind of give a, a pitch, a dog and pony show of sorts in front of council as far as what they needed in their departments, and, and that kind of played into how the budget was set. And then we got a new city manager, and he said, no, we're not gonna do it that way. He said, the city manager's job is to bring council his best budget. This is what I need to run Peachtree City for one year to the standards that we have set, uncompromised excellent. And that's what Justin has done. And you've done it beautifully, and I appreciate it very much. This is what our city manager says he needs to do his job. I understand that the initial meetings and conversations over many weeks with all of our department heads initially had more money in the budget and more staff positions. And they have been culled and cut and massaged and reduced and changed to reach this so that we could do that slight millage rate rollback and still keep our services, maintain what we provide to our citizens. I think this is a stable model for the next five years. It's a conservative model, as Justin said. The assumptions are reasonable, and we'll be able to keep uncompromised excellence. So I support this one hundred percent, and I really appreciate it, Justin.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, any last comments?
I just think that it's a great opportunity that we can roll back something for the citizens. Although it's not as much as everybody would like, it's still something. It's an effort towards trying to do what citizens have asked us to do. Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Kelly.
With that, council, we stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks.